Order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Open meetings law is behind me on the bulletin board and there's also one in the official meeting book. Roll call Alacia.
Uh, Tom Kelly.
Here.
Chad Lanis, Janet Mueller.
Here.
Eric Turner.
Here.
Bob Stevens.
Okay, number five is recognition of visitors and public comment. If anyone would like to address the board, this is the appropriate time to do so. Or if you'd rather comment on your specified agenda item meeting, so at this time, please stand, state your name, address, and the name of any organization you may be representing for record. Individuals may speak only one time unless limited comments to five minutes. If there are more than six individuals who wish to speak, the thirty minutes will be divided evenly between the number speakers. If you're planning to speak about personnel or student matter involving individual, please understand that the district has a complaint policy procedures to resolve such complaints, concerns. Board members will generally not respond to any questions you ask or comments about individual staff, members, or students. This is a public meeting for a conduct of business comments from audience while others are speaking will not be tolerated. Lewd, obscene, profan, slanderous, threatening and hostile conduct or statements and fighting words will not be tolerated. The board will not act on any matter unless it is on the published agenda. So with that being said, welcoming anybody. Do we have anybody who would like to speak? Hearing then, let's go on to report sick day is the elementary for Mr. Gunn.
Uh, yes, just going through the first month here, kind of a whirlwind for me, but uh, September, we had our in-service, uh, September second. Uh, elementary staff, we started to break down our dibbles. We're starting to get into the testing. So we broke that down a little bit. We also introduced our instructional practice guide. That was one of the things we were focused on. And what administrators are looking for when we do our classroom observations. So we went through the teachers with that and there'll be more to come as the year goes on. Today, we did the grandparents lunch day, big success. We had over eighty grandparents. I was supposed to keep tally on that and I lost. So I started talking to people and stuff. So we had a lot in there. It was really good to see everybody interacting. It was really good, really good for me to see. Uh, we had school pitchers that went smooth. We got everybody in there. We had one missing and then we found them. So everybody's in there now. So we're good to go. Banking schools is starting up again. That's September seventeenth. The sixth graders are gonna help with that again. Uh, kind of facilitate, facilitate what's going on and take the kids, younger grades, money and stuff like that. So it's really good for them to learn everything on the financial side and saving and stuff like that. And just last of all, in this first month, just a a shout out to the elementary staff for kind of showing me the behind the scenes. What's going on, the daily routines, kind of keeping me in line like, hey, this needs to go next and this needs to go next. So that was very helpful. They didn't need to do that. So made my job a little bit easier and, and the teachers are really making adjustments and putting students first right now. So that's really good to see.
Any more questions or have any questions for Mr. Harrison? And then let's go into high school principal, Mrs. McConnell.
All right, um, we were able to knock out baseline assessments that first week of school, which was super helpful, but it was definitely a feat. Um, we tested all seven twelve students through N W E A and all three cores. So math, reading, and science. Um, they just blew me away. I have our data table there. That's just a screenshot of how I track our data, but you guys can kind of see, um, where we sat two years ago to where we sit now. It's entirely different and in a really positive way. So just as a quick hit, um, math, we saw a twenty-four percent increase over the last two years of students at or above grade level. In math, tenth grades leading that at eighty-seven percent of that sophomore class is at or above grade level in math. For reading, um, a twenty percent growth since twenty twenty-three, ninth grade sitting at eighty-eight percent at or above grade level, eleventh grade sitting at eighty-five percent. You look at that eleventh grade cohort and that's really exciting coming into an A C T year. Like that's, it's very promising. Um, science, previous to last year, they didn't test science. Um, in visiting with science teachers last year, they were willing to risk take with me and, and start getting some data put together, but even then, we came in on the year at seventy-seven point four percent of kids at or above grade level in science. This year we came in at eighty-four percent at or above grade level in science. Um, what that tells us when we see those, like, the percentage obtained the information over the summer, when a lot of the times you'll see a summer slump. Um, so again, it, this was very encouraging to me. It was very encouraging to kids and it was really encouraging to our teachers. It's nice to see your hard work pay off. Um, we really dug in last year on a lot of key instructional strategies and just really talked about rigor, um, a whole lot. And clarity and they did the things, they jumped in with both feet and we got the results from it. So creates kind of a different great problem coming into this year is it's very hard to continue that growth cycle. Um, when you come in that high. So again, average, if you were to pull any district on random, you're gonna look anywhere from fifty to fifty-five percent and our numbers look like that. So a great spot, but a whole new challenge of how do we keep pushing these kids and providing those enrichment opportunities for them? Um, as a whole, four out of five of our students are at or above grade level in any area. And you should be really proud of that. Activities and participation, uh, fall activities are in full swing. Um, I have records listed right there at the top. You guys can look at those. Um, Keegan, Zane, and Marshall qualified for, uh, National FFA Dairy Judging, which was exciting for them. Um, junior high cross-country, uh, Melanie, Laura, and Keely have medaled in both of their last two cross-country meets. Um, believers and achievers, district nominations, um, went to Peyton Weber, Jackson Sanner, and Isaac Cinzel. Those will be recognized at halftime um, of our next home football game and they then are tasked with writing an essay and trying to take it at a state level. So that's very exciting too. Um, screenshots there are just a participation numbers, just good to track, good to know. Um, our enrollment, we're sitting right now at a hundred and fourteen, seven, twelve. So given our enrollment, um, that obviously reflects in participation numbers. Boys, fall sports for high school, sixty-three percent of our boys are participating and then girls, fifty percent are participating. Ideally, I think it's great to start having conversations about how we get that to a seventy, seventy-five. That would be like my goal. Um, but it's, it's good to have the data in front of us so we can start those conversations and kind of strategy build around that. Home events are listed. If you are available, come watch them. It's fun. They're a lot of fun. Um, and then homecoming information, I listed that there for you as well.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. McConnell?
Good job.
Thank you.
Let's go on to superintendent's report, Mr. Webster.
Why is mine?
Yeah, I just thought mine is blocked.
Why is it blocked?
The link for his, uh.
No, it's not. It's, it's mine. I don't know.
Let me tell you, when I get mine, it says blocked.
Anyone with the link? So let's just try this again. I don't know. I blocked it. Well, I will, I will get this put back in here, but I will, I have it right here.
Just waiting.
Well, I have, I got it done. I just didn't want anybody else to read it tonight. I will, I will re-link it so everybody can see it. I don't, I don't know what happened on that. Okay, so facilities wise, we did have some water get in the wrestling room on the night of that football game that didn't start till ten o'clock at night, which was awesome. I will tell you this. It was so good to have an amazing team around here, uh, between Bree and Jason and Kaylee. Um, just kind of watching them work and then, and helping work through the situation. I mean, we had to, we had an idea that we were gonna start at seven forty-five and then we had to push it back again. Just, we, we just kept working together and that just felt so good to, to just have a good, solid team and making good decisions. What was best for kids? Um, we've talked through a lot of different strategies that night. I think we had at one point talked about maybe even postponing all the way into Monday to find officials and, and if, if it was gonna rain again. So we had, we'd kind of gone through everything and, uh, actually ended up getting a play. I thought the kids played well. They played hard. Um, but uh, so just kudos to the whole group on that thing. Um, weathercraft did come out. They did get that fixed. I did share with you guys a picture of that, what that looked, that hole looked like. Um, and so now we're just gonna hope it stays fixed. Um, something to just start thinking about, we gotta start getting some storage, uh, in this, in the school. Um, we did have alley cap. Carl, the night that he was here in August, he did our alley cap report, um, which is here. Um, one of the biggest areas that he talked about in his report was the electrical room. Um, see if I can find it. Um, so recommendations right in here, the kitchen, it's quite crowded. Uh, boiler room needs to be cleaned with a little bit. It's difficult to get to the main electrical shut off. So those electrical panels, so behind where the cages are, where the sports stuff is. If you go clear in that back room, they have red tape putter down around, but then they've stored stuff in there and we just gotta get all that stuff out of there. Um, and I walked around the building today trying to find areas that we need to store stuff. Another one of his recommendations, um, would is what do we do with visitors when they come in the building? Um, you know, like, are they allowed to just go through the building to get to a different place? Um, since I've been here, since we started school, we don't allow, we don't just allow people to walk through the building. They check in at the front office and then somebody, whether that be Brittany, whether that be Jason, myself, escort them down where they need to go. Uh, the last thing we'd want is a uh, a smiling parent to walk in and then turn into something bad going down the hallway, uh, whether they run into a kid or a parent, a teacher or something. Um, so he has some recommendations. He has some lofty dreams for what he would recommend. He would take, move the entrance over to the to the, uh, north. And so like the entrance, you'd enter into the office and he blows off the entrance. And so you'd have a point in and then you'd go into the office before you went anywhere else. Um, but again, that's, that's pretty lofty looking down the, you know, um, right now we're, we're making it work. And I know the other end is the if Kasia or Bree buzzed somebody in on that end, Bree does the same thing. Kasia would, but it's hard for her to get around right now, but Bree would walk them down. So it's kind of our plan that we use for, for safety in the school right now. Um, something Carl mentioned to me was make sure all staff members know where the water main is, natural gas. Um, and actually in all of my years of education, that's something that I've never even known it, you know, never even thought about, but for the amount of coaching that we do, if you're up here in the, on the weekend and you have a water main break, I just shut it off. So, oh, that was interesting. Um, so we are gonna, that's the, the next in-service that I'm gonna go over with staff and just make sure that everybody's aware of where all those are. Do you know where they all are? All the gas and the waters? I mean, you've been here. Yeah, I probably not know where to. Do you know where they are?
Oh, I know how to get to the roof. I do know how to do that.
So, so again, just like things that we don't think about, um, but just making sure that everybody's aware of where, where all those shut offs would be in case of, in case we had an emergency. So we will go through that um, in October. Um, sign sheet posted on doorways identifying shut-off valves. And then be sure to keep all classroom doors shut and locked when occupied. So so those are the big ones that he talked about. Uh, we, then we got to the playground. Um, we did talk about the gravel a little bit. I think there's enough out there, but you know, that's for a whole nother conversation. So all in all, um, his report was pretty good. So um, we talked about, we talked about the buses and how we upgraded the buses. And then that was, that's about it. So and when I get this, when I put my report back up, I will share all this with you guys. So you, you can have it also. I apologize for this not being up, but do you have any questions from the alley cap report? I mean, that, it went out very quick, but I just tried to get the highlights so we didn't spend too much time on it. Uh, transportation so far has been good. Uh, and then the bus is on the agenda. Uh, school updates, the electrical in the front commons and the F C S room have been updated. Uh, we have to hang a cabinet to hang a microwave to finish off the F C S room, but it should be done here in the next couple of weeks. Um, something that we, I, I heard about, and I don't know if you guys have heard, T-Mobile. So T-Mobile's Friday Night Lights. You, I've signed up for it through my socials and I've pushed it out to the staff members and I put it in my memo. Um, T-Mobile gives away five thousand dollars every Friday night up until Octo- the end of October. And then at the end of October, they pick four winners. And of those four winner, they'll win twenty-five thousand dollars. And then of those four, one of them will win a million dollars to redo their football field. And so it's all through, um, sharing, sharing social media posts based on the school. It's mostly based on the football field because that's kind of what the promotion's for. So we are doing our best. I've sent it out to all my, all the administrators, all the secretaries. Um, I don't know if I sent it to you, Kayla. I will, um, I sent it to Jessica, Sanner, just all the people that I could think of that have the socials that push stuff out. Um, just to try to, I mean, you can't win if you don't play. So we're gonna, we're gonna do our best. So if you guys are on social media, I have my Twitter account as, um, Saber Nation CEO. So you can give it a follow and then you can like anything or retweet anything that I put out. Um, but I do try to put stuff out for, about the school. I posted pictures about grandparents day to day. So just trying to get more promotion on this school, but I think it'd be, it'd be kind of fun. I mean, it's gonna be, we have to push it out there and we have to have people repost stuff and put things out there. And there's different hashtags, which we're gonna get up on social media to, for people to, to push out so they can at least give us a shot, right? Um, okay, a little bit of, uh, okay, I've got a couple of other notes that I'm gonna talk about before I go into the legislation side. Um, student council member. I would like to see us invite our student council president every month to the meeting. Um, just a quick, give a quick five-minute blurb of what the, what the culture of the kids is like in the school, because I mean, at the end of the day, that's what we're here for is the kids. You guys feel okay about me inviting them in? I figured you would be, but I just, I think it's important that, I mean, we have a student council, we have a, a president-elect that they should come here and, and represent their, their student body and kind of talk to you guys too about what's going on. So.
She's excited about it.
Do we wanna bring back to recognize our student of the months as well, or is that?
That's a conversation we're having on the high school end right now. I don't, yeah, I don't know if our practice has been super consistent or if it's been what we want it to be. So we might be tweaking student of the month. Um, but I think you're doing it right.
Start that over. So like the end of September will be the student month for September. And go from there. So. And then between administrators, we can decide, I mean, we'll, we wanna recognize those kids at the board meeting. We can bring them in, put them on there and just have them recognized there. I think anytime we get recognition for kids.
Yeah, we kind of went away from it.
Last year was a year when it got dropped, but we also had a lot more than versus two. Had one per each grade as well. So, you know, just, so.
We'll keep working through that and hopefully we can get some of that to be recognized. I think it's important.
We do too.
Um, something to just think about, you know, as Bree was giving her, her spiel on, on numbers and test scores and things, I wrote down. I looked up, um, so I was trying to show her a video from last year, but I couldn't find it. Um, the USA Today puts out school rankings and they'll do that the end of October. Uh, and last year, the elementary, just the elementary at Sutherland on that ranking. So the four hundred and sixty-one elementary schools in the state of Nebraska, Sutherland, Sutherland was in the two hundred and fortyth spot somewhere, somewhere in that range. So that's gonna be something that we really watch, um, closely, because I, we obviously want that to shoot way up. Our goal is to get, our goal is to get into the top, you know, fifty really, um. But, you know, just your neighbors, our neighbors over here in the south of Hitchcock County, their elementary school is rated number two in, in the state of Nebraska, out of, off of that report. So um, I did not, I didn't, I didn't look up the high school one. Um, but it's just something that I, that I thought about. So I just thought I'd bring that to our attention. So when that comes out at the end of October, we'll, we'll really start paying attention to that. Um, I know the kids are going to National FFA.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, got affirmation that Chad Kirshner is going to do the mail. So yes, so I'd love to hear that today too. So. Uh, legislation wise, got some clarity on a bill allowing students participate at another school if an activity is not available at their current school. So they must meet the requirements of the school that they are participating at. Therefore, if they're coming here from being homeschooled in the Hershey district, because we offer girls tennis, we don't, but if we did and they were gonna participate, they would have to follow our rules. So if they were failing our class, they would not be able to participate in our school. Right? And they can only participate in activities at that school. So therefore they can't do tennis here and basketball at Hershey. Right? So if they're choosing, a homeschool exempt student is choosing to do sports in your district, they have to do all sports in your district. They don't get to jump back and forth. Does that make sense to everybody?
You got a kid that really wants to play tennis and Hershey offers tennis. They can go there and play tennis, but then they have to play basketball there.
Correct, is it? Correct. And that's only homeschool exempt. It's not like Jack Wallace, who's a junior, is gonna go to Hershey to play basketball. They're gonna play football at Sutherland, right? I mean, it's not, he doesn't get that option. That's not, that's not real. It's just a homeschool. Okay.
Cause we're getting their money anyway, right?
Right. Yes, they option, yeah.
Well, and I'm just trying to figure out if they just stood, okay.
And with an option, we also learned this week that you cannot part-time option either. So if you are a homeschool exempt student, you just wanna come take one period here and then participate in whatever sport that you want. Um, you can't do that actually. Um, if you're gonna option in, it has to be at a full-time basis in order for you. Yep, yep.
So there's.
There was some interesting.
Things, yeah.
And then, uh, Bobby, Bobby could tell us on the phone that um, if somebody ever fights that, that would be the first time actually in law, because there's no precedent set. So we would know, we would, that wouldn't be our first time ever. So.
Well, and mostly be, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I just don't want it to be us. I'll let somebody else be the first one.
The student that's our time.
If we had, and we ever had somebody just did sports? I don't think so. We have, just do sports. Yeah, yeah.
It was FFA, it was sports. It was just FFA.
Yeah. But that was before you had to be enrolled in the five hours. You could just do the activity.
So it's one period. Um, so if, if a homeschool exempt student is enrolled in one period, they can participate.
Okay.
Um, if they are in our district. It's the thing.
Yeah. Even in sports.
Even in sports. It's in sports.
I thought you said full.
They're within our district.
If they're within our district, absolutely can do that. Yeah.
Um, the only exceptions to that are, let's say, student is in, like, home district doesn't offer the activity that they want to participate in, then they can come.
That's the only exemption.
Or if residence is closer to our district than it is home district, that also is an exception. Very rarely would that happen. Yeah.
Yeah.
Those are rare.
Right. Okay, any other questions? I know that was clear as mud, right?
I don't know if for future meetings, would we be able to ditto this screen so the the ten days can see it or not?
Did you put it on both?
Probably yes.
Okay, so, okay, then, yep, we, we sure can. We will. Okay. Uh, N S B, Tom. I got.
I don't.
All right. You're the only one I hadn't heard from. I just, I just couldn't wait to call you out on that. Well, you have till tonight at, tomorrow morning, uh, you have till tomorrow morning when I sign everybody out.
So who do I have to go talk to to get you to go?
Which hotel?
The boss. I don't know. On the twenty-four, I'm gonna try to get us, try to get it down there.
That's their mic.
You're which hotel you're getting?
We're gonna be on almost twenty-four. I got.
Life is good.
Sorry, several alarms set. I've got, I'm.
It's not gonna be, at one point, one year, we thought we might have living quarter, boys and girls, trailers. At C H I, because of Grand Rapids hotels. Oh, that'd be fun. To get to know each other.
So, uh, and then just some of the things for me, on Friday, I'm taking a half-day personal. On Monday, I'm driving the bus to Hyannis. I got a hard pack superintendent's meeting in McCook. The twenty-four parentage conferences coming up. Um, we have our board retreat on the sixth at six thirty. It's kind of been the consensus that I went with. So what was the location of? The board retreat, it'll be here. Yeah, we're gonna be here. Yep, yep. Uh, the fourteenth, next board meeting and quarter ends crazy to think in like a month. Yeah.
Well, it's quick.
All right, any questions?
Okay, hearing none. Let's go on to number eight, and that is border courts, court movement, if anybody hasn't actually quote. Any committees that have met in the last month? Let's go on to pressures report, Chad.
Uh, my favorite month because it's always zero percent for expenditures. Should be at, uh, eight point three three for expenditures. Receipts are currently at a hundred and twelve and should be at a hundred.
Any more comments on it from either one of you?
I already said that this month there was, you know, they looked, the, uh, the bills looked a little bigger because of the alley cap this month. And then Apple came out this month and our yes, she just assorted, like, came out this month. So those were some of the bigger ones that just look a little different, but we're right on where we're supposed to be. So.
Great, thank you. Uh, item number ten is consent agenda items. And do I have a motion to approve ten A, which is approval of the minutes, the regular meeting on day twelve twenty-five, budget hearing on eight twenty-seven, eight twenty-five, and the general fund in the amount of six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars and forty-two cents.
So moved.
Got a first, do I have a second?
Sorry.
Second roll call.
Chad?
Yes.
Mom?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Emotion carried. Let's go on to our action items eleven. Eleven A is the two thousand and twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-seven collective bargaining unit. Mr. Webster.
Yeah, this is just your S C A, so they can, negotiations is a first step in it, uh, for, I mean, to negotiate for next year. We have the letter and you can read that if you want, but I recommend that that's, that's the group you go with.
So do I have a motion to approve the supplement education association S C A as a teachers bargaining group, uh, group for supplement? I got a first, do I have a second? Sort of. First and second, any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Kyle?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Mom?
Yes.
Motion carried. Let's go on to the eleven B, which is a local sub. Mr. Webster.
Uh, this is something that I've done in practice for a long time, just always a local sub, since they're only gonna sub in your district, having the board approve them. Um, I, this gives us, this, I think I spelled her, I think it's I C A, I spelled her name wrong. Um, but this gives us another sub to put in her bank, use, and I think, man, I would recommend us approving her. Get all that write paperwork and everything. So pending her um, background check, we'll start using her.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve justice?
So moved.
Got a first, do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second, any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Janet?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Mom?
Yes.
Motion carried. Let's go on to the eleven, same with the activity bus.
Okay, this was tabled from last meeting, um, and then we followed up a bit at, um, our budget meeting. Um, I still recommend the Cornhusker International Bus at that hundred and seventy, about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar mark. Um, I think that's we're gonna have something else for activities.
I make a motion to approve the purchase of the Cornhusker International Bus, um, for up to a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Do I have a second?
Seats in that one bench versus what?
Those are, those are regular seats. Yes, correct.
I'll second that motion. Any more discussion?
That's the, uh, transportation's probably recommendation.
It is. It's the one with the Mm-hmm. If it's, it's not a flat nose, it's, it's a normal.
Looks like, uh, yeah.
Who are we purchasing that from?
Uh, Cornhusker.
And that, the work can be done, the work can be done in Northland.
Flat versus Southland.
Yes. Right. That's what I, I, that's what I was.
Twenty twenty-seven I C bus.
Are we speaking a series? Yes.
Cornhusker, Cornhusker International Trucks.
Okay.
Yeah, and then it's got the Cummins B six seven turbo. Is that in line, six feet down.
Yeah, that's another reason, like, you don't have to take it. I think that other one was a little bit cheaper, but. Yeah, that's. In my opinion, worth it.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call. Kyle?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Um.
Yes.
Emotion carried, okay, eight or eleven D is uh KSB superintendent eval. I handed those out to you guys, I gotta fill in, it's gonna be a no matter. This one, the short version, but maybe if I find comments. Yes, you can tell, very few pages, and there's five questions. When you, this is a little radio button, when you slide slide it across and you choose unacceptable needs improvement, whatever. All of a sudden, a comment section opens up, so you can put comments on it, on the bees. And she looked at, you can also add artifacts to support any of your comments. Or anything of that sort as you are evaling the superintendent. Um this has just come out.
Yeah.
This summer.
Yes, and so it is approved by the Indy E, cuz I asked them at the last conference, I seen them ask. So this is all of the questions now. She does have a, how many Karen has a twelve-minute tutorial on how to fill this out, if anybody wants to watch it. I haven't figured out how to afford that guys on on to you guys because they made me set up an account. With KSB. So then the next one is our nice one, that is nineteen pages long. This one. So the question is, do you guys wanna take some time to look at these? And decide which ones you would prefer to fill out and make that decision next month, or what is the board's desire?
Do you have a preference? You've read them both and been on the site and.
Um like I said, I didn't have time to listen to Karen's tutorial when I was, when KSB started coming out with this. Both ringing, I stepped through their their uh little spiel down at one of the conferences, I think they've been at both conferences. Selling this and. With everything that they were telling me, yes, I would prefer this one over our Google Doc, secondly. The Google Doc is very manual for me, like in very manual. Even though I get all your stuff come together, I'm the one who have to compile everything on the backside. And this will lighten the ASBs, this one will do the compiling for me. And so that part of it would be a lot each year, shall we say, and like I said, when you look at. Four questions, five questions in each area, they're pretty straightforward questions. Where, you know, when we did the Google Doc and what we developed along, to kind of. We had to give explanations on what you really should be looking at, I just think it'd be easier for all board members.
Yeah, I would.
But you think we've detailed enough and we can be thrown off the fair, I mean, five.
Well, I think.
To evaluate. It in just look at those questions versus this one, not that that wasn't a good one, but. There were so many questions within that, that we didn't, we don't interact.
It was too much, and this one wasn't a lot after NASB, nothing against NASBs, but. I even brought that out at the last uh superintendent principal uh workshop we went to. Some of theirs, we're not supposed to be in the weeds that they, that it was asking us to rate him on. Well, wait a second, we're not supposed to be doing that, so why are you asking us to evac him in those areas? So that was the only thing with ours and NASB that I think had an issue with, where. KSB has heard all of that, and they have streamlined it down to these few. And yes, I think what they said, if you give them anything under right now, it's popping up that as soon as something happens. But I think unless you give them satisfactory, you have to give a comment. If they need improvement, what do they need improvement on? It's not gonna allow you to just go on.
No, I like. We won't, won't hurt anything to try it if we don't think it's settled enough.
We can come back. All of them, yeah.
Ones were not fair to necessarily.
Well, like I said, and if you're.
It wasn't a fair evaluation because we did.
If you weren't like the president or one of the executive board members who was working with the soup. There was a lot of times you'd have no idea how to answer them, and that's the way I felt before I took an office is like, how would I know? I'm not in a school on a daily basis, I don't visit with them, I don't see all of their day-to-day interactions. And so that was the part that I'm gonna say, this one is better than that one, we're stepping back, we're staying in our lane. And we're going to eval on what we know.
Is this something we can make a motion on, or do we need to bring it back?
Actually, it's a just, it is, anything we have underneath our agenda item, I know he labeled it as discussion, but as long as it is an agenda item. I can actually make that motion tonight.
I feel like if KSB vetted it for us and they're looking after our best interests.
And Indy E has already approved it, so it's gonna take nothing for me to send it in and ask for them to approve it for Southern. So.
I'll make a motion.
Let's make a motion, do I have a second, I got a second, any more discussion?
This will go together until next.
Hearing none, roll call. Mom, did you something up? Yes, you did. Janet?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Chad?
Yeah.
Mom?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Motion carried, the next item is item number twelve, and this is board member. Absences, and do I have a motion to prove Kyle Stevenson's absence from the budget meeting on eight twenty-seven twenty-five?
So moved.
I have a first, do I have a second? First and second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call. Chad?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Um.
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
And motion carried, and the next item is number thirteen, the next meeting date will be October.
We'll do that at the next meeting. Oh.
Mine?
Yeah. It's at the end of the meeting.
Okay, we go ahead, do we have a motion to prove Brandy being gone tonight from this meeting, she is sick, she called me and. Was hoping that the Tylenol would take effect enough to come.
So moved.
I got a first, do I have a second? Then first and second, any more discussion? Hearing on roll call. Mom?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Hey, motion carried on that, so then the next meeting date is October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five at six. And the hearings are when?
Okay, go ahead.
So the, so actually, the next meeting date will be the seventeenth at seven. For the budget hearing, the tax asking is seven oh five, and then our special meeting will be at seven ten. And then you'll have October sixth for your board retreat. And then October fourteen.
Is meeting.
Is the, is the next scheduled board meeting, um and those kind of starting into activities, so. I think um we'll just leave them and obviously it's a volleyball night, so we'll squeeze Mr. Henderson from that one, and I assume. You as well.
I don't.
You better go.
On two, so then if Chad and Kyle are gone, we have.
Four.
Potential four. So we have to make sure.
I might be here too, because McCready is going to. Uh barrel racing, Oklahoma, so. Sure, she she'll be back for that, so just, oh, keep in touch.
Yeah, when it gets closer, let's confirm with everybody.
Okay.
Sounds good. Anything else? If not, maybe an adjourned at six fifty-four?
I love you.
You're gonna make it to darts every time now.
So moved.
First, second, yes, roll call.
Such a positive attitude, Chad, thanks for coming, you've been kicking me all night.
You've been trying to be.